Okay, we will call this meeting to order. We have a adoption of the agenda and recommendation of West Elgin Committee of the whole adopt the agenda as circulated mover and seconder moved by Row and Lethem on favor and that is carried. Disclosure of any pecuniary interest. Seeing none, recommendation of the committee of the whole municipality of West Elgin hereby adjourned into a closed session at nine.
Nine thirty-two.
Nine thirty-two under section two thirty-nine, two and D of the municipal act, RSO, what's RSO mean?
Registered Secure Order.
Okay, I never knew what it was. I just kept saying it. Two thousand and one consideration will be given to matters pertaining to a labor relations or employee negotiations over in seconder. We have Cameron and Talia all in favor.
Serious order.
Yeah. Hey, do I get to change colors now?
I have a report out for you.
Okay, our report from closed session, Madam clerk, if you'll read it.
That West Elgin Committee of the whole provided direction to staff with regards to labor relations and employee negotiations.
We're in seconder for that, moved by Row and seconded by Talia, all in favor. It's carried. Okay, next up is our staff reports verbal update from staff on the 2020 budget process.
Maggie, would you like to switch and move to fees and charges first?
Yes.
So we're good, we're going to move right straight to six point three and we're going to move right into fees and charges because we have some stuff ready to go. Does anybody need a paper copy of fees and charges or are you guys good? Jackie's here if we want to start with building.
Hey, morning Jackie.
Morning, Mr. Mayor.
Get to the right page here.
The first one is Bill is administration, but if you move through to building, we'll start with Jackie.
I'm working through.
I think it's page three.
Yeah. There we go. Okay, you're going to lead us through this.
So we're going to start with building inspection first.
We're going to start with building inspection first. Go ahead Jackie.
Okay, thanks, Magda. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to kind of provide a little background before we jump into the actual numbers. As you are aware, in the past, we've changed the fees and reviewed them on a yearly basis. The fees and charges are required to cover the costs of running the building department, so enforcing the Building Code Act, inspections, plans, review, and so on. The Building Code Act requires us not to charge so much that it's, you know, makes money, so to speak, but it is required to cover costs. Unfortunately, we're still not at that state yet. Unfortunately, any losses or any revenue that's not covering the cost of the building department, it goes back onto the property taxes to cover what's missing. So you'll notice in the new proposed fees, I haven't touched the residential fees since the two thousand eighteen going into two thousand nineteen year. So this is the first update since that time. I have increased the fees rather significantly, but we have been running a deficit basically for the past three years still, and so this is an attempt to try and get closer to cost recovery and hopefully put a little money into reserves should we have any kind of surplus. The difference in the residential fees, for instance, for a sixteen hundred square foot house with about a four hundred and fifty square foot garage in two thousand twenty-one, the fee would have been fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. In two thousand twenty-two, that fee will jump to two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. On the cost of construction for a sixteen hundred square foot house is approximately three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So in two thousand twenty-one, that's less than half a percent of the cost of construction. In two thousand twenty-two, that would be about two-thirds of a percent. So it's still a very small part of the cost of building a new house for something that size, for instance. Malahide for the same, I use both Malahide, the township of Malahide and the township of Southwood to compare our fees. The township of Malahide for the same house would be three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. Southwood is still down at the one, one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. They sound, Southwood, although they're neighboring or close to us, their development is a little bit different than West Elgin, so unfortunately, they may, maybe not the best comparator. But that's, that's where I think we need to increase the fees dramatically. I have increased the fees mostly across the board. One other significant change from last year to this year is the commercial group D and E occupancies. So those are office and mercantile occ, often, or occupancies rather, or mixed use where there's, you know, a business on the main floor and residential above. So your downtown core buildings, downtown core buildings, two stories high. So last year, I wanted to change the fee structures from a dollars or cost of construction per square foot to a per square foot model. Last year, I used some projects that we had that previous year and compared it to the fees from a neighboring township. Unfortunately, I, I believe I made a mistake, to put it frankly, at thirty-five cents a square foot is, is just too low for those types of permits. So I have put them up to a ninety-five cents a square foot cost. I still like the cost per square foot as opposed to the dollar value. Just, I think it makes a little bit more, it's more clear for the applicants to know what they're they're paying per square foot instead of the design build for companies that are estimating their cost of construction and maybe don't have intended out the, the cost prior to applying for a building permit. Some of these types of construction projects are more or less building on the fly, so to speak, as far as their costs go, and they don't always have an accurate or even a quote to give me at the time of permit. So I feel like the square foot price is still better for them as far as doing that type of arranging the fee in that way. I've also added a couple of new fees, expedite permit review. So in the case of, you know, a garage or a shed or somebody wants me to turn the, the fee around in a couple of days or something like that, if time permits, typically, a lot of building departments add a twenty-five percent on to the established permit fee to expedite a permit. And then I've also added alternative solutions review. So that's where a designer may not want to meet or can't meet a code requirement. So they're proposing an alternative solution to that code requirement. There's a specific path through the code to determine whether or not that can be accepted by the chief building official. So I've put in a review fee for that because we didn't have one previously. Is there, that's kind of an overview of the, the significant changes. Most of the other changes are just small increases. I don't know if anyone has any questions, if that's, that's basically the end of my presentation for it unless you have questions about it.
Just one quick question, Jackie, now in our basic residential, I know you compared this to Southwood, where are we in comparison to Dutton Dunwich?
I'm proposing the same fee increases to Dutton as well. That report will be going to council next Wednesday.
Okay. But any other questions for Jackie? I'm not seeing any specific questions, Jackie. How about you, Magda? Okay, oh Bonnie?
Just a clarification, Jackie. Thanks for your work with this. In the comparison spreadsheet under industrial, commercial, institutional section there, I was looking at the group C multi-unit residential section, and it says that it excludes single detached, I understand that. Townhouses and row houses, so they would all be based on a single unit then, are they? And only like an apartment building would fall under this category?
Yeah, so apartment buildings or hotels, motels, that, that type of category or apartments. Yeah, basically just apartment buildings are mixed use group C and D are already under another category above. So the other, like your single detached, semi-detached duplex townhouse and row house would all fall under the first category in the chart under group C occupancies for first floor, second floor, basement and so on.
Okay. And I was also looking at the, in the fee comparison, the minimum fee for, was it? I guess the minimum fee was two hundred. You're proposing now to increase it to three hundred where, but Malahide and Southwood are still at one fifty. That just seemed a little bit higher. Why are we going that route?
So the, that covers additions and renovations as well. Sometimes a small, say, you know, somebody's adding a bathroom or office or something quite small, there's still quite a bit of work involved in reviewing all of that, those small additions and it's, there's a lot of time that can be spent, especially on homeowner or those types of plans, I guess you could say. So that's why I've, I've increased it to three hundred because it does take quite a bit of my time to review those and then do all the inspections. Basically, all the inspections in some cases can be as much as a house with all the different requirements for those types of additions.
Okay, I understand that.
Anything else? Just trying to figure out a, one on, on the spreadsheet we have sent out to us, permit fees are for a tent over sixty square meters. And what's that, a twenty by forty ten?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the six, sixty square meters is approximately six hundred and forty-five square feet. So anything bigger than that or a group of tents that are bigger than that.
Yep. Cool.
Jackie, I do have one question. On the spreadsheet, there is a reinspection fee listed, but no fee beside it.
Oh, there should be, it should be seventy-five dollars. It's the same as it was last year. Maybe I forgot to put that in there.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Through the chair, I guess maybe this is for Jana. So when are we proposing to approve the fees? As I know, a lot of contractors are already quoting for two thousand twenty-two jobs so that they're aware of the changes.
We have to, with building ones, we have to give twenty-one days notice of a public meeting. So at this point, it would be December, the December second council, and they would go into force in effect January first.
Thank you.
Everybody else happy? If that's it, Jackie.
All right. Thank you very much.
Seems you've satisfied our curiosity. So carry on. Have a great day.
You as well. Thank you.
Do you want to go now?
Okay, next one is going to be planning.
Oh, there you are, Brian.
Go ahead, Brian.
Can you guys hear me all right? Yes, perfect. Just double checking. Um, good morning, committee members. Yeah, so if everybody could bring up the planning schedule, I'm just doing it myself. It looks like page twelve of the package. Yeah, I thought it'd walk you through the changes. Recommended changes that I'm putting forward for the planning piece regime. There's added clarity provided to some of the list items there as well. But I'll walk through the proposed changes that we see in the far right column. Zoning certificate letter, we're proposing a ten dollar increase so that our, our compliance letters and tax certificates are consistent across the board for fees collection. So a tax certificate has the same as a zoning certificate, just makes it easier for administering. And the rationalization between for the bump up is just looking at the comparative municipalities and what they're charging to be consistent there. And time spent, as there is quite a bit of zoning letters that are done for the jurisdiction, so anecdotally, looking at twenty twenty-one, you know, there's, I think, well over three dozen type zoning certificates that are done already this year, so for context. With regards to official plan amendment, I'm proposing, I'm suggesting to council that a four hundred dollar increase being incurred of that. So that requires a twenty-four hundred dollar application fee to the municipality. Past practice, we haven't seen many official plan amendments in the municipality. So I'm not too worried about this. The rationalization is there's a lot more extra work involved with an official plan amendment because it goes to the county for approval as well. So there's a lot more steps to the process and it's simply double your zoning by law amendment application fee. So that's to recognize the extra work that's involved with it. Moving down the list with regards to plans of subdivision and condominium. I'm trying to recognize that, you know, there are more applications forthcoming to the municipality, so I want to make sure fees are, are ready for them. Currently, the current fee is two thousand dollars. I'm suggesting that it be doubled to four thousand dollars. And some of the rationalization behind that is lot creation can be done through consent for a few lots as well. The threshold is, is for lots. So a person would apply for consent and would be charged eight hundred dollars theoretically times four for thirty-two hundred dollars. So anything beyond four lots would be through a plan of subdivision process. So that's why I thought it made good sense that the fee be four thousand dollars, being five lots times eight hundred to get to there. The challenge is, is the way the piece is set up is one size fits all right now. I don't know if that's an appetitive committee of the whole, but sometimes municipalities look at scaling their types of the lawman fees as well. So a ten lot subdivision is different from a fifty lot versus a two hundred lot versus a five hundred lot subdivision. But I'll throw that out there for discussion as well. Moving down the list.
Just, just to stop you there, Brian.
We can answer questions as we go.
Plan of subdivision and condominium at our level is four thousand dollars. What, what does the county charge for that?
I can double check that real quick. Give me one moment.
See, there's an additional county charge that adds on to our charge. And then the total charge sometimes gets pretty large and when we're trying to compare ourselves with other jurisdictions that have a fair bit of development, we don't want to price ourselves out of the market.
Yeah, I don't think truthfully, Mayor, that the developers are really sweating about these fees. They're quite nominal compared to other jurisdictions. I can attest to that. So let me just double check on these for plans of subdivision. Just pulling it up real quick. So the county takes a four thousand dollar fee on subdivisions and condos. And I'd like to put forth that probably the lower tier, the local municipalities do a majority of the work on plans of subdivisions because ninety percent of our conditions are municipal related. So if council will recall an application submitted, there needs to be a public meeting through council. Those recommendations of, and suggested conditions then go through to the county for a county council decision on the applications. From there, there's three years for developers to fulfill their conditions of approval. Nine times out of ten, a majority of those conditions are mostly municipal related conditions. One of the biggest ones is entering into a subdivision condominium agreement that will address how the development proceeds. So, you know, this fee that I'm recommending, that, that covers all that process, right? So I can appreciate being comparable as well, but I think it makes sense that the fees are, are making sense to what we charge for consents. And, and the amount of work that's involved from beginning of application submission until the plan of subdivision is registered. For instance, we've got seaside down at the lake. That's been around for a while. So an application was submitted, a fee was submitted at the time of their application, nothing else has been submitted since, right? We, we can give an example of Todd Place Phase Two in West Lauren. So that's on Marsh Line. They submitted application to the ministry in nineteen eighty-nine. And we have no recourse now that they're looking at doing detailed engineering design to collect any more fees because it's an active application still. So there's great instances where there's lots of significant amount of work that's involved at the local municipal level.
Okay, carry on.
Yeah, so just on to the next item on the list. So planning and development agreements, I tried to just cluster that all together. So one size fits all. Planning agreements can be required for minor variances, consents, site plans, condominiums, subdivisions. So it sort of clusters them all together on the, on the, on the form that way of a fifteen hundred dollar fee. And as council can appreciate, there is quite detailed agreements that are required and time spent to execute an agreement to get to execution stage. So that's trying to recognize the amount of time spent on it. Again, legal cost would be extra on top of it as well as administering the agreement through a municipal engineer as well. So that is preparation costs essentially. Um, and then clarity on the amendment to an existing agreement being half the cost of an agreement for execution above. So I'm recommending two hundred and fifty dollar increase to seven hundred and fifty dollars. From there, on the second page, we get into cash and lieu of parkland. So cash and lieu and, and parkland fees are required for subdivision processes. So that's either through consent where you're creating lots or condominiums or plans of subdivisions in themselves, right? So the first piece really speaks to the lot creation fee. Currently, the municipality has a seven hundred and fifty dollar flat rate fee. I'm recommending that it be updated to two thousand dollars. Or referencing the legislation of the Planning Act with specified percentage of the fee. So I find that significantly low for parkland dedication fees based on how the methodology is calculated within the Planning Act. Planning Act requires two percent of the valuation of lands for commercial, industrial lot creations and then for residential lot creations, it looks at five percent. So, you know, I, even at two thousand dollars, I think it's a little bit on the low side if you think about a value of a vacant lot of record and applying it. So I'm trying to get that, that number a little bit more realistic. So that when we talk about the next piece, cash and the parkland for subdivisions and condominiums will reference the planning legislation because it's a lot bigger of a scale of development rather than having a once-off fee for these single lots that are being created here and there. So any comments or questions on that? Great, seeing none. Part lot control application. So I found that was a gap in their current fees. We don't have an application fee for that type of process. So a part lot control process is an exemption to subdivision law within Planning Act. Great instances developing a semi on a lot, then you put a reference plan down on the common wall and apply part lot control to it. So being that there is a process legislated for this and I've already gotten queries for this, I think it'd be appropriate for having it in our ease regime so that we can charge for that. So the theory is, is there's a timeline associated with doing these things. That's why the next line item says extension request. And that's half the cost. So if they want to come back and need more time, there'd be a fifty percent of the cost of the original application to do another ask to extend the time clock to do part lot control processes. Any questions on part lot control? Great, moving down the list, telecommunications towers. This is consistent with comparative local municipalities again. From time to time, council sees these go through councils. We're required to do a, a letter of concurrence from the local municipalities to support these telecommunications towers. They're, they're federally regulated under the telecommunications legislation. And there is a protocol that they need to follow for application circulation of a proposed tower to get neighborhood inputs into their process. So this is recognized time spent associated with the towers to recoup some of the, the costs associated with it.
Do you feel that the five hundred dollars is, is, is enough to cover those costs?
Well, I'd say it's not fulgury cost recovery. I can tell you that. It's a cost established that can be comparable to other municipalities around the area. But at least I think, speaking that the municipality hasn't charged this in the past, I think it makes sense to sort of build it in gradually over time. So that was my thought process on it. I mean, essentially, it's not much different than a site plan application on my end. It's detailed site location processes. So, you know, in an instance of a, a site plan application where we're charging double that, a thousand dollars. So food for thought for. a thousand dollars. So food for thought for committee to.
I I think it's certainly in our wanting to encourage the development of broadband in our community and the fact that it's a lot of it is is looking like it might be wireless. It's probably a reasonable a reasonable fee to put on it as compared to no fee at all that we did have.
Yeah, and I I think it's kind of appropriate that, you know, the planner's time spent on it is incurred by the one making the request instead of relying on the tax base to pay for it a hundred percent. So I mean, I don't think any telecommunications proposals like will come in will have an issue of concern with this. Most municipalities do have a fee regime associated with this. So I think it's pretty common practice and I think our fees are pretty pretty cost effective in that that regard. Any other questions on telecom towers? Great, seeing none. Just going on to the next one. With regards to reef notification processes for a planning application based on a proponent's request. So this is an instance where we're having a public meeting and things with the proposed application has changed based on the proponents' request. Once we've already sort of went through the public meeting process. So there should be something in the fees by law to have them pay for the additional time of regoing through another public meeting process, renotification processes, what have you, to modify their application. So I'm recommending that it be fifty percent of the fee so that whatever bits of minor variance, fifty percent of it, it's a consent, fifty percent of it, what have you, right? Any questions on that? Seeing none. The next one I'm recommending is that there should be a fee for processing inquiries related to land acquisition that the municipality owns, including our allowances. So there's some fees incurred for the time spent to do the due diligence and the background research to see if there's merits and addressing council with it, of course. So that was the thought process there. And it might also encourage a lot of these, you know, baseless asks, I guess. If I can say putting their money where their mouth is type thing. You know, it's going to cost them four hundred bucks. Are you really serious about this type thing, right? So I think that'll help people a little bit more too on potential land acquisitions that the municipality owns. So again, four hundred dollars is what I'm recommending on that. I don't know if company has any comments on that. Seeing none, moving down.
Just to give an example of when when someone would be asking to pursue an acquisition of municipal property.
Sure, I'll give an previous example that council would be aware of. In twenty nineteen, a developer in West Warren proceeded to make an ask to council to acquire a road allowance piece to add into their development. You might recall this. So that's a good example of one. We have municipal loan property assets. We just did some land sale processes through administration and council of a Gilbert Street Lot in West Lauren as well as a Main Street Lot in West Lauren. So there'd be abilities for that fee to be incurred that way as well. There could be other examples I can give you. There's quite a bit of municipal land assets that we do have. So sometimes it makes sense that that we release those lands and transfer those lands to abutting landowners based on certain circumstances. So this is to establish some sort of fuse regime to sort of pay a little bit for that process that we're incurring. Because it's generated by them.
Yep, thank you.
Going down the list, the next listed item I recommend as an addition to the fees is the change of conditions of consent. So right now, committee or sort of council authorizes lower tier municipal conditions to the county land division committee. Can a county land division committee makes a decision. So after decisions made, those conditions are firm. If a proponent needs to change a condition or revise the layouts based on other circumstances that pop up, there should be a fee incurred by them to change the conditions of consent that's already been authorized. So the theory is again fifty percent of the original application fee to do that, which is eight hundred. So that's why the four hundred suggested in that in the proposed fees. Any questions on that one?
So if I've got this straight, someone would work through the initial process. The municipality or the planner would recommend various conditions for the consent. They'd get to land division and something would be rejected because it didn't meet their requirements. And then that person who'd already gone through the municipal consent would have to pay again.
No, added clarity, this would be after a decision has been made by the land division committee. And let's say, you know, they want to revise the severed parcel by another quarter acre.
Okay, a decision of the landowner sort of thing.
Okay, so once the division, land division committee makes their decision, they have one year to fulfill their conditions. So within that one year, if they want to change the condition, conditions, if the landowner wants to change the conditions, they should pay for a process to change their conditions is what I'm saying. And that's legislated under the Planning Act as well. That's why I'm trying to shape a fee for it as well. Any other questions on change of conditions to consent?
Just wondering, did they not, they did not change the planning act that you could now have two years to to meet the conditions?
Good point, not just yet. The bill isn't in effect just yet. There is some consent changes coming down the works for subdivision law and the planning act for sure. So good point. So in that case, when it's two years, it'll still apply. Just they have two years to do it. Any other questions on that one? We're good. All right, moving down the list, I'm proposing a new fee for red line revisions to draft plans of subdivision and condominiums. So again, that's to revise a plan after the fact. So that, you know, if they're in their conditional approval stage, after they receive approval from county council, they want to change the lot layout of the plan, there's some fees occurred by them so that we can relook at things. So right now, I recommended a twelve hundred dollar fee for doing that. And then the next steps are sort of related to it as well. Draft plan approval clearance to the county or the Ontario Land Tribunal. So that's to do a final letter saying how they've met the twenty conditions related to the proposed development within the draft plan approval that was given. So that can incur up to three years on most development for plans of subdivision condominiums, depending on when they're approved. The next item also speaks to draft plans as well. That's an extension request. So again, there's three year lapsing dates for draft plans of subdivisions and condos to fulfill their conditions within. If they can't meet that within that three years, their their approvals lapse and they have to start from scratch. Alternatively, this would allow them to do extension requests to change the three years to four years per se or what have you, based on the merits that they submit. And I'm just suggesting that since the legislation gives this ability, that there be a fee regime for it as well. So you know, I'm recommending an eight hundred dollar application fee for that. Any questions on draft plan stuff that I just mentioned, those three items? Questions, comments? Right, moving down the list, the next one's kind of been an interesting one for many to think about as well. It's Ontario Land Tribunal alternates for each municipal employee that attends a hearing in support of an application that has been approved by the municipal council or committee of adjustment. Those are two municipal planning authorities that we govern. So obviously, if and the phraseology that I put in there, if it has been approved by municipal council. So that's if an application submitted, council's seeing the same direction as the application. There should be, I feel there should probably be some fees incurred if they want some representation from the municipality as part of their application being heard at the Ontario Land Tribunal. It's a little bit different than a an application that council refuses. Because that's the opposite direction of the application. But you know, if 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 the development is approved by council or committee of adjustment, then you know, I guess from the municipality's standpoint, should the tax base again pay for the time spent incurred with a Ontario Land Tribunal hearing when their properties developing from or benefiting from the development, right? So and there is considerable amount of time spent with a Ontario Land Tribunal, depending on how far along the process it goes. So yeah, that's the thought process on it. Hearing, obviously, depending on the complexity of it, can be, you know, a matter of a day to weeks.
Question for you, Brian. When there is an appeal that comes forward, is that appeal against a decision that the council has made? Or is that appeal against the applicant?
It's based, there's a few ways for appeals. There's non-decision appeals as well. So let's throw that off the table. We won't talk about that one. It's for decisions that council or committee of adjustment made that are appealable. So.
So is that not, and 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 just trying to be the devil's advocate here, if it's council that has made the decision regarding a potential development, is that not the responsibility of the council to defend that decision and not put it back on the individual landowner that's made the application? Because you know, we we can say yes or we can say no. So how does that actually work? The Planning Act does say that we can recoup those costs on an appeal?
Yeah, other municipalities have done it. And I just, you know, I I guess it's, you know, the developer is applying for an application that council supports. If somebody else appeals it, does the municipality want to incur the cost of municipal administration dealing with Ontario Land Tribunal hearing? Or should that cost to defend his application be put on to the developer? Just like they'll be paying for costs for their lawyers and all their their team. So because at the end of the day, I'll be subpoenaed by by the developer because I supported the application through council. So you know, I'm going to get stuck going to it no matter what. So should there be a fee incurred back to them to pay for the time or should it be paid up by the tax base? That's a good question for council to think about. You know, we have one current appeal rate that will get into this. So you know, I just want to have council ready for those costs that are going to be incurred by me doing it. If it's the decision of council that it be absorbed by the tax base, great. But I think there's an ability to absorb that cost back on to developer that is going to proceed with the development, right? So if you want me to defend their application, you know, I'm suggesting that there probably should be a fee for it.
So the question is, are you defending their application or are you defending our decision?
I'm I'm representing my planning opinion on it. That would be consistent with council's decision.
Um, so does this also apply to a citizen initiated appeal? In which, like, as opposed to a developer?
Yeah, so if it's an applicant or owner that applied, it'd be in that situation. And the the trigger mechanism here, that is if the municipality supports that application. So in instance where they've applied, council theoretically refuses and the decision of the zoning by law amendment, for instance, that wouldn't apply in that situation. Because at the end of the day, the only one that's going to appeal it would be more than likely would be the applicant that didn't get their permission, right? So that would be the thought process behind it.
I was just thinking in terms of is applying this fee to, say, for example, an individual that disagrees with a council decision on a development. Is it going to look as though we are putting one more step in the process to make it more difficult for an individual to appeal a decision?
Well, I don't know about that. The Ontario Land Tribunal has fees associated with submitting appeal, although nominal. But anybody that has been through an appeals process or that plans to appeal better be prepared for the additional costs incurred to support your legal counsel that's required to defend an application. So they will have costs incurred on that. I just know as the municipal planner, I'll be subpoenaed and more more than likely to attend to support the application or defend the application. So.
Just to clarify, you don't have to have legal representation to appeal. You can appeal as an individual citizen and stand up there, right? Chances aren't the same as if you had a planner and all of that background stuff. Yeah, sorry, just I just wanted to make sure. So yeah. This is, yeah, so it's it, they are trying to make it available to the average citizen. Yeah, I I don't know.
Self-representation is very rare, I would say. Because it's hard to separate your your seats as representing your own self at a hearing, but it is theoretically possible. But I I think it also gives credence that, you know, appeals have to be planning based appeals to make it to a hearing, I guess. Baseless appeals will be thrown out ahead of time. So.
Okay, and just to so to follow that discussion, how are these new, any of these new fees for that matter? How are they applied to situations that are currently underway? They can't be. They, so if an application is already in place, say, for example, to the land tribunal, then that that said and done, this is anything after the first of next year kind of thing.
After the bylaws enforce and affect, it can't be.
So yeah, if if a hearing is coming up and they want my attendance, then the fees by law regime would apply at the time of their ask.
Right.
Now, the reality is, though, I just want to clarify this. If Brian is subpoenaed by, like, if Brian has to go on behalf of our, because we have to have legal representation. We do have legal representation at the O L T for a current. We've asked for somebody. If Brian has to go for that, Brian, are you charging for that?
If I if I have to go. If I, if I have to go to the hearing, that's what.
Defending council's decision.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, you, you, are you going back to charge, charge the the applicant and we're defending? I I don't know, like.
Supporting their application, so that's the thing, thing, if uh we're approving their application that they've submitted, uh, they will need me subpoenaed to support and defend their decision. Uh, that council's decision that supports their application. So, I'm gonna be mission critical to their team to defend council's decision, so.
They have to get party status then. They're not automatically granted party status in a hearing, where they will have a lawyer.
Applicant will be in, the applicant will be a party, for sure.
Yes, but they're originally, right now, the appeal would be between us and the appellant.
Yeah, the applicant will be.
Then he has to be granted status, yeah, yes.
Which they will be, right, I mean. To defend it, I suppose they could, and then they're, uh, it's not gonna go anywhere, or why would we uh defend it uh without them defending their own application, I suppose, doesn't make a lot of sense, so. If the applicant is going to defend and want their uh proposed development approved, they're gonna have to engage a lawyer. And if I've supported it with recommending it to council and council approved it or committee of adjustment, they're gonna subpoena me and I'm gonna have to uh attend the Ontario Land Tribunal. So, I guess the theory is, is uh um uh we can look at uh actual costs, we can set a flat rate fee and, you know, uh, you know, we get a little bit. Uh, or we scrap it and we don't get any money, so I don't know what committee members are thinking aloud, uh, you don't have to think uh this second and give me answers, but uh, we can put that one in the parking lot, I guess, because that's a little bit of more of a challenging one. I just saw, wanted the abilities for fees to be collected to do such things, I think, uh, has some merits as well, but uh I didn't know if there's any feedback from committee members on that one and what their thoughts are.
Through the chair. Is this done in other municipalities, smaller municipalities, is there a fee structure such as this?
There is some uh examples out there that are doing it. Some have flat rates, I know, some look at uh actual costs, so it's quite an array out there, I guess, so uh, I'm neither here nor there on it, I know you just have a gap in the fees that you don't recognize it, so that's why I brought it to you guys' attention. If you want the ability for some sort of uh um contribution abilities um for this. So.
Okay, thank you, Brian, I think that about wraps that up, doesn't it?
Uh, any other questions on that one, by chance? Um, I guess, uh, maybe if I could get some sort of conversation from committee members on their thought process, if we're going to leave this in, uh, the type of fee we want to look at. Uh, are we thinking more of a flat rate fee, or are we thinking more of an actual cost, or how do you wanna look at that? Any uh suggestions?
Well, well, uh, right at the moment, we have uh one, two hands going up, uh, desperate for a five-minute break.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah, we can, we can put a parking lot on this if you want, for a minute, while you guys have a break, and we'll come back.
We're gonna, we're gonna break for five minutes, okay, thank you.
Sure, yeah. Thanks.
Brian, are you ready? We're ki- ready to come back.
Okay, Brian. Yeah, I think, thanks for the whistle there, I heard it, so, perfect.
General consensus around the table on the uh land, uh, Ontario Land Tribunal attendance thing, uh, uh, I think we based it back on that it's uh our decision and probably, uh, it's a situation where we need to defend our decisions and certainly, uh, certainly puts the onus back on to uh people that want to appeal, know that uh it's gonna cost them money and it's going to make councils aware of the fact that uh even when you're making decisions, there's a potential repercussions going with it, so I think that uh at this point in time, council would probably uh request that that be removed from the fees and schedules uh by law.
Yeah, so just to build on that, I guess, uh, now, there's usually two types of appeals that do come in, right? The applicant who is unhappy with uh council's decision or committee of adjustments decision, or uh, the other one nominally would be individuals or groups, uh, that would be considered like a third-party type appeal. Who are unhappy with council's decision, right? So those are the two types of appeals that uh are available, third-party appeals like that, right, the city and the applicant, uh, you know, the municipality and applicant would be the two uh uh parties defending the decision, obviously, so. Um, you know, yeah, there's two, two managers of approach, now municipality depends all appeals to the Ontario Land Tribunals. Or, uh, you know, if an appeal comes in from the applicant, I guess, you know, then we'd have to d- defend that one, but um, again, third-party appeals would be uh um um, the applicant and the municipality, so. Yeah, but from, you know, uh, there's benefits from defending the appeals as well, um, no.
But I don't, um, my experience is, is, I I don't think that it's been a a huge issue, uh, I can only remember one uh, one fairly uh significant uh uh Ontario Municipal Board hearing, and uh, in fact, uh, the 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 municipality uh contributed to uh that O M B hearing, because the council at the time felt that it was beneficial to the municipality to have that type of development, and uh so we uh, we invested, we went in partnership with the proponents uh uh, and hired our own lawyers to represent us, and uh, well, we were successful uh with the O M B, so uh, I guess it was a justice. Costs money, so uh, uh, so uh, we'll uh, we'll remove that out of the uh, the fees and travel services so ease and charges by law, and uh, we'll move on to the next uh reactivating a planning application.
Chair.
Or have you done those? No, okay.
Just uh, moving down the list. So, the next one is uh on the bottom of page thirteen of twenty-four of the package, to get everybody back oriented on it. Uh, second last from the bottom is reactivating a planning application that has not been acted on in twelve months. Uh, putting in a fifty percent of the original fee, so whether it's a consent subdivision, uh, minor variance, rare chance, but uh, you know, uh, that there's some, some sort of fees collection to keep an application active that sat dormant for a year, right? Um, there's examples of that, that uh, you know, that had dust sit on the file for a while. Uh, that hasn't moved forward and they haven't done much with. So, uh, that's sorta to blow the dust off again and get back into the, the, the details of the file. So, theory on that, any comments or questions on that one? Seeing none. Plans of condominium uh is the next one, there's condom, condominium exemption processes under the condominium act, uh, that then relates back to the subdivision of law uh legislation within the Planning Act that are exempt from uh public uh meetings. So, uh, doing so, I think there also should be a fee incurred for doing condo exemption processes. Uh, and I'm recommending that it be consistent with a a consent process where we're authorizing comments to the county on it. So that's how I realized those fees for eight hundred dollars, similar type process. And with that, uh, yeah, um, without having in-house engineering, uh, there's always those costs associated with files, legal, uh, because we use uh, uh, out of house, you legal services as well and other consulting fees, that those fees would be uh paid on top of it um, by the applicant, so that's sort of the gist of the planning fees. Um, and then, uh, yeah, I guess I'll turn it back to you, uh, chair and members of the committee, if you got any questions or comments, and we'll go from there.
Wrap up anything uh need to uh bring out on these? Uh, certainly looks like you've uh, you've done a lot of uh, of of work on this file, Brian, and uh, I don't know whether you uh, you did it or Brian did it, I don't know who did it, but uh, certainly, uh, I think there's a lot of things that quite possibly uh in years gone by have uh obviously have maybe not been given as much attention to as they uh really needed to have, and uh so thank you very much for your hard work, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I think this'll help uh 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 the municipality to be uh development-ready with fees uh ready for uh particular proposals that come in, so that we uh do collect something at least, so hopefully that clarifies things, and thanks for your time this morning.
Okay, thank you. What do you want to do next?
Yeah, let's start with administration now.
So, for administration, we're proposing um slight increase to um basically um requests from the public, so um reprint of tax water bills, we're proposing a slight increase from ten dollars to fifteen as well as tax certificates, um zoning certificates, fire reports, um record search and work orders, uh, we're proposing an increase of ten dollars. NSF charge, um we're um increasing it from thirty dollars to forty. We indicated that um other municipality near vast that and done which, uh, they're charging fifty. Um, I don't think it's um, we're not will gradually increase, but I propose not to increase it um uh, this much for twenty twenty-two. Go ahead, yep. Yes, yes, so NSF charge, it goes to, to the person um that defaults, in in default. Um, this basically charge covers our staff time.
Could never figure that out, charging a guy that hasn't got any money, more money.
And then, um.
Through the chair, um, how many NSFs do we get, a lot, to, that our staff has to deal with them?
NSF charges, oh, one, two per year, not a lot. And then uh tax sale packages, so that amount is determined by um uh our uh third party, um, real tax. So, we're changing it back, so basically, it's the um package that we sell uh to uh the purchasers. The, the fee is ten dollars and the idea is just to have that information available to parties interested, not to make profit, so we're not, um the idea is not to make any money or not, so we're reducing it down to ten dollars. And um, the, the other change that we have made is bookkeeping, uh, our administrative charges, we are removing them from uh fees and charges as um, it doesn't pertain to general public. And of course, uh, animal control, um, dog tags, this is gonna be covered by general um tax rate, so it is being removed from um fees and charges. Schedule.
Early minor moves. Okay, I guess you're good with that.
So the next one is fire, again, add no changes.
Yeah, so they don't have fire in their package, they only have the ones with changes, so you can move to Port Glasgow Trailer Park.
Port Glasgow Trailer Park, Lee, you're up next.
So for the Port Glasgow Trailer Park for twenty twenty-two, um, we've looked at all the uh, so seasonal fees, um, all the fees, additional charge fees. Those are all gonna go, we just put five percent across the board for those, I know there was a relatively large increase in twenty twenty-one, but um, in, you know, we don't wanna find ourselves in that same position uh, in another two or three years from now, so we'd like to see an increase across the board there. The uh, the dryer that was going to go to three dollars, obviously with the new um electric diers that we installed this year, and uh, the one thing that we didn't um increase, so the only thing that we didn't add the five percent to essentially at the trailer park is the uh rental of the dance hall and the pavilion. Um, we wanted to leave those at the twenty-five and five, um, just because that makes it consistent with our other pavilion uh, with our other facility rentals across the municipality. So, essentially, everything there is, it's just a five percent increase across the board with the trailer park. And I think that's still a very good, very good deal, um, compared to other parks, even in West Elgin.
Lakewood's four thousand dollars a lot. Don't know about the extras, but I know that uh, that the Yacht Club meeting, one of the members just got a trailer. Any questions on the trailer park? Yes, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. I, I look at the, the booth rental. And, and you know, I, I think that booth actually would cost us money if it's running. And I think maybe we should be looking at a food truck and charging a food truck, so we we have money going in and no expense. Because I, I'm almost sure the expenses for running that booth, and I know, I don't think you get anybody to do it for that money, for one thing. Um, but we're paying for the hydro, we're paying for everything that goes in there, and um, it, it's a loser. If a food truck, it's a gainer, because we have no expenses and we can charge them for doing the job.
Yeah, through the chair, uh, that's why we uh look to put it a- as per R F P. That just allows us some flexibility to do some research and see what's going to be the best fit for the park. We did have, we put it out this year and had no interest in it, um, so we didn't wanna be tied to a, a set fee. Um so we didn't want to be tied to a a set fee. But yeah, I think that's something that we certainly have to look at before next season.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Uh done with trailer park? Okay, what's up next, Public Works?
Through the chair, so the uh very few uh changes in Public Works. Uh the compostry you'll see there was set at thirty five forty, we're uh pretty well out of the ones that we had ordered. Two, three years ago, we are out now, so um depending on, we have been taking uh names of people that have been calling, inquiring about them. So if we have enough interest, then we'll, if we're able to place an order with the city of London, again, like we did last time around. We may look at stocking some more and certainly we just sell those, it's a cost recovery thing, so um depending on what we pay. As a ball quarter that will pass that along. The other thing in Public Works, you'll see uh work on road allowance on behalf of Elgin County. Under equipment rate, um so just a brief overview, there is an OPS equipment rate. That we use to set the equipment rates that we charge. We charge ourself internally seventy percent of that rate, so if a piece of equipment, if the OPS rate is a hundred dollars an hour for that piece of equipment. Internally, we charge ourselves seventy dollars for that, for that unit. Um we have always passed that along, so when I build the budget for the county road system, for the the county network. I use that seventy percent rate, the same as for our own municipal roads. Um as part of this road maintenance agreement review that we're going through right now with Elgin County and all the other lower tier municipalities. Um there has been some uh. One of the, one of the ideas put forth was that uh some of the municipalities felt that they should be charging more for. The equipment that they're not recovering their costs, so one idea is that we may, that they may. The county may say, here's the OPS rate, it's a hundred dollars. That's what you're allowed to charge us, that's, so everybody's charging the same, right now, the municipalities aren't. All charging the same rates or using the same structure, so um. I mean, in our case, it's it'll go up, it would go from seventy percent to a hundred percent of the OPS rate.
We'll just be paying the county back to pay us, pay us the money that we put the rate up, so it's the dog chasing the tail.
So through the chair, does that uh this is under the the title of uh working on the road allowance, does that apply for work on the roads as well?
That applies for everything that we do, so everything that we do for the county. Um that goes into that budget that we set every year, so every, every anytime we use a piece of equipment. Anything to do with county maintenance, that would apply.
And how are those negotiations going?
Um, they're going, we actually have a, we have a a draft final report coming back to the committee from the consultant. Next week.
So just all. Dog chasing the tail thing will be time for consideration in this year's budget.
Yes, I feel it will, uh I, we don't know, we haven't seen that um draft agreement yet, but this has been, we've been at this now for. Four months, I think, and you may know a little bit more because I believe you uh.
Yes.
Got a peek at that during your CAO's meeting.
Yes, so the final report will be presented to each individual council within the next uh couple of months. So.
Bill has to pass the sniff test at county council, too.
Basically, what they're gonna present is the findings and recommendations and then um, you know, um it's up to county council. To discuss any further steps.
We have not been part of that whole process in any shape or form to this point in time, so it's gonna land on our desk. And then who knows? Where that's gonna go.
During the budget process this fall, I'm, I'll know more after next week, but. There's a good possibility I'll have to plan on a hundred percent. And then. Right, plan on the worst case scenario, it just means it, you know, we're not gonna get any more money. So it means less equipment, time can be spent maintaining the road network.
I I can't support it at county. Uh without a ability for county to audit the work that's being done on our behalf. And at this point in time, uh there's no audit.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add that, I don't think um county council is gonna make a new decision. As um, let's see, uh the recommendation from consultants was to basically. Keep track of the uh um information, as a lot of municipalities, they don't separate county from. Uh from municipal work, so that's one of the recommendations, so I don't think there's gonna be any changes to. The budget for twenty twenty two.
All right, right, you know, it's 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 the same formulation that was put together when we went through amalgamation. Uh you know, it's worked fairly well and 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 great credit to the MAGDA because uh. West Elgin could, and I've said this at county council, then. West Elgin can demonstrate on paper exactly uh equipment and manpower and material that is put on. Apply to county roads, uh so we know exactly how much money uh. Uh is put in and we know how much money that the county has give us to do it, and if you are efficient and you do the job. Uh the way the system has always been set up is that if at the end of the year and you have a later snow year, you got money left over. Uh but put that in the bank because next year you might have a heavy snow year and you're not getting any more money. Uh system has worked fairly well for a good number of years, I don't think that we've been hung one way or another much with it. Uh over the years, have we, it's pretty much bounced itself out. Uh I don't know how much better system that you can get in that, but the uh bottom line is you have to keep the accounting in place. To be able to know whether you're ahead or you're not ahead. Well, we'll see where it takes us. Anything else on uh?
Uh no, that's it for public works.
Recreation?
Uh recreation, um. The you'll notice under the arena there, booth rental, uh it's, I think the same thing as the trailer park, we didn't want to have a set fee there. Certainly, we we uh we put that out this fall for uh. The booth at the arena and got no interest, so that's another one of those that we'll have to take. Uh a look at for next season to see if it's uh. Whether we look for a contractor or 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 do it uh with our own staffing, but anyways, we just. Like I said, we didn't want to be tied to a set fee there. Recreation, um we had a staff screening due to COVID requirements, we had a set fee there, forty five dollars um last year. We, we are proposing right now because of the screening requirement, so any. Whether it be the arena or whether it be the recreation center. Um anybody that comes into the facility has to be screened, so. That for right now, while that screening is taking place, we proposed a twenty five dollar per hour fee. That's what we're paying for the um security guard at the arena that does the screening. And um you know, for events that are being held at the recreation center, we have to have a staff member present during those events to do screening as well, so. There is a cost associated with that. And then we.
You're proposing that that be charged to whoever's.
Correct.
Whatever that means. Many others turned on. So that twenty five dollars would be charged to the users?
Correct.
Is that just in the arena? Oh, that's general, so in addition to, you know, charging an hourly fee. For using the recreation hall, for example, there would be another twenty four dollars or twenty five dollars an hour added.
That's correct.
Screening would probably only take the first hour, though, they wouldn't have to be there the whole time, right, if somebody.
It depends on the event, if it's an event where people are coming and going and it has to be screened for the whole event.
But through the chair, um for this year, since we have resilience funding um available. We decided that um that cost will be absorbed by that grant funding to offset um. Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one.
And as you can take. Anything verbatim that it, my understanding. That uh January twenty seventh, passports are no longer required, so. Uh who knows, I guess they're not even necessary for staff to work at hospital anymore, so. Things are fluid as always and keep changing and mutating and so you do your best plan and then change it. Yes.
So is this something that needs to be included in council grants then for this year's budget consideration, this fee? When we waive fees?
COVID related.
It's COVID related, I mean, in the agreement was that there is funding available that has to be used by twenty twenty one, otherwise we'll lose it.
But this is for twenty twenty two, so it should be done come January, so. This amount per hour needs to be included in the fees and charges when council considers waiving fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Until such time as it screening is no longer required.
Yep, okay.
So I told Jeff here a while ago, last time we were doing uh, working on the budget, and he says, are you gonna cut your budget, I says, we're thinking more of cutting our risks. Okay.
And then the other uh change you'll see there, it's it's not a change, it's an addition. So the scout hall, as soon as we have that completed, ready for rental, that'll be a twenty five dollar per hour charge consistent with our other uh. Um facilities.
I think we should charge two hundred and fifty dollars for uh a request to waive the fees for the. These that we charge for the facilities.
That's a long convoluted explanation.
Makes sense, doesn't it, because you know we're going to get, can you waive our fees?
And so the last uh, the last change there, you'll see on the very last page is uh under swim team, so for the synchronized swimming in the swim team. Um we've upped that from fifty five to sixty five, just to make that consistent with less than cost, because it takes the same amount of time and the same amount of uh. Manpower to do that, so.
Well, that was fair. Uh, well, I have uh fifteen minutes and or thirty minutes.
We have two more to discuss.
Do you need a break?
I don't need a break.
Everybody need a break? So what do you want to do next?
Let's do transit. Oh, you don't have transit, there's no changes to transit? We're done.
I just, we just need the recommendation that West Elgin Council or West Elgin Committee of the whole provide the following direction. To move forward with uh all of the increases, except removing the. All Ontario Land Tribunal attendance fee in the planning section.
You've heard the recommendation, I move in second, I've heard that, move by row, second by camera, all in favor, that is carried.
Now, let's go, um, let's go quickly uh to council grants, this is not gonna take long. So basically, I just wanna stress uh the importance of um. And encourage council not to waive um fees in the upcoming years as um, as you can see. Um especially for the rec center, um in um last three years, and those numbers are very consistent. The operating cost um for the rec center um ranges between thirty nine to uh forty one thousand dollars. And those are just operating, so utilities, cleaning um and minor repairs to the rec center. Their uh capital is not included, and as you can see, we barely generate any revenue. Um, we're hoping um finish the year twenty twenty one um with. Ten thousand dollars of revenue, as currently we're around seventy five hundred dollars. Um. We have, uh for year to date, we have waived a lot of fees. Um, basically, if we keep, we continue doing this, um you know, uh general tax rate. It's gonna have to absorb that cost, which means um. Even um bigger increase on on their tax bill. Um, for twenty twenty two, I realized that it's gonna be tough here, it's gonna be tough here for the municipality, it's gonna be. Uh tough year for homeowners, we decided not to increase any um rental fees, but um. You know, we need to uh pay attention to what we waive, I realized that there are um things that. The council would like to support, but generally, we have to uh watch uh the bottom line for the rec center especially. As facilities are costing us a lot of money and there is gonna be a time where um we won't be able to afford them. Um this year, for example, we replaced three roofs on our facilities. Um, we have to have, um, we have to start putting money into reserves for those facilities as they're a. You know, they're getting old, um, there is uh rec center is prime example. Um, there is upcoming roof repair, ceiling repair, um, those are two things that. Um, we're gonna put in our capital budget for twenty twenty two. Um, the repair on those type of things, it's not cheap, this is gonna cost us another uh two percent of. Increase, close to probably, I would assume between sixty to a hundred thousand dollars to do both. And and another, um, another, um, um, my suggestion would be to. Um, we always, in the past, we had a line in our budget of council grants. Um, that amount re range um from between fifty to seventy thousand dollars a year. Uh my recommendation would be to decrease it down to. Twenty thousand dollars if possible. I know, but it's gonna be tough here and you know, we're gonna have to um uh. Be creative next year and um focus on priorities. And um, you know.
There is a suggestion, like, we could, you could still give out grants, but maybe cap it. The most a- at a maximum dollar amount each person could get, you know what I mean, that way you can still spread it around. Cause don't forget, you guys gave away what, ten, twelve thousand dollars to one group last year?
Getting to the creativity stage here. Okay, by getting to another creativity, um in the. Things that we've waived or not charged for this year. things that we've waived or not charged for this year, can we put that over as COVID related? Why? People haven't had the ability to get out and fundraise. People haven't been able to do the normal things that they normally do in a normal year because of COVID. And because of that, we've had to compensate by allowing them facilities at no charge.
But only. But of the ones waived, only, the only people that would actually fundraise would have been the Fair Board.
If I thought, didn't, didn't we waive the nursing school?
Yeah, but they wouldn't have.
They got kicked out of the school because of COVID.
I'm not sure. I don't think we can with that. Yeah, I know.
They wouldn't have been in our facility. No, 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 the nursing schools. Tiny Tots was at the school. And they got kicked out of the school because of COVID. And they got moved into our facility. Compensate for the fact that they got kicked out of the school. Exactly. So let's, let's tap into our, our funding and because of extenuators. No, but I'm, she was talking about needing to, to put in for 2021. $4,000 bucks. You know how she's on about money here.
I can, I can certainly look into that. I'm not sure if we can claim that against our funding, but.
Just by.
With regard to this topic that we're on, I, I have been thinking about, you know, the grants and the waiver of fees. And I do feel that, you know, we should certainly charge for fees again. We, when we decided to waive the fees, we knew it was going to be short term. And, you know, this year is going to be very difficult in our budget. I thought about the amount of grants that we should be granting. And I remember the discussion when we first decided about a grant program was that we really needed to have people realize that waiving fees and, and staff time, it, it, it all has a cost, and we wanted to try and recognize that in some ways. So, you know, if we decrease our grants back to 20,000, as you're suggesting, or even 30,000, we really aren't going to be able to, to recognize those, those staff costs. So that's going to be a hidden cost to the municipality again. And as I was thinking about the charging of the fees, I, I want you to consider this. If the municipality runs a program, there's a $2 to $3 fee per person per use. If we have a, a group that wants to run a program, it's almost as if we're charging them more than if we actually ran the program ourself and paid for the staff time and only recouped $2 per person. It, it just doesn't balance out to me. Like, I just think that what we charge them shouldn't be higher than what it would have cost us to run the program. Like, for example, the shuffleboarders, they're being charged about $35 an hour or something like that for them to use the.
A month.
Oh, is it?
Raise it by five cents and see what happens.
Yeah, like, if, if we were to run that shuffleboard program, what would it cost in staff time and planning and so forth? It would be a lot more than $2 to $3 per person per event. I don't know. That was, that was just one of the thought processes that I went. I, I don't think we need to discourage people from, from running recreational programs. On the other hand, there might be six or 10 people that use that program. And the whole tax base is paying for them to use it. I don't know. These are just all thoughts that I'm having in terms of recreation. Like, the more recreation we can offer and run here, the more attractive our community is to, to people that want to live here.
No, I, I certainly understand that. If somebody is running some kind of either yoga class or, or any kind of exercise class, they're being charged $25 an hour. And I know as a fact, they will not, if they're privately running program like this, they will not run unless they have the minimum number of people. So let's say if it's 10. So, and they don't, I think they charge between $7 to $10 per session, per class. So I, I mean, they still profit from running these type of programs. When, as far as municipal programs, things like basketball or down the road, if we run or pickleball, I think it, $3 is very reasonable for, for a user to go and use our facilities. As a matter of fact, I, I don't think you can find, you can go anywhere and play ball inside the building for $3. And you can stay, you know, let's say two or three hours, because those programs, this is the length of, of the programs. The issue here is, I think, the trying to run something and program that will and have enough people participating in it. We normally, we don't get more than six to 10 people. So it, it, it's a tough decision. In the past, we're trying, we're trying to find out, there will be a survey done soon. Trying, we're going to try to focus on youth, seniors, and, and you know, middle age population. We need to find out what the interests are. I know that at the red committee meeting, there was several ideas that were brought to our staff's attention. It's just, you know, it's going to, 2022 is going to be trial and error. You know, we're going to try one thing. If it doesn't, if there's no interest in it, we're going to try something else. We have developed communications with Dutton. Their rec center is not available for rent. And they have, they have planned renovations. We have approached them. There is an idea of borrowing their equipment, just, you know, so we don't have to invest money into the program. See if it works for us. If, you know, if it's, if the program is successful, then, you know, bring an idea to council and perhaps purchase the equipment. But at this point, you know, it's, it's hard to decide what's going to work, what's not going to work. The bottom line is that, you know, for every, every, whoever is using the facilities needs to pay as it is costing us money. And to avoid huge increases for all the property owners, we need to start charging money for facilities rental.
I, I think this is one of those things that has been talked about and kicked around for ever since I've been around here. And the only thing that, that I would leave with council is, this is one of those items is like the hill you want to die on. Because I know that in the past, I remember one time years ago, we did raise the shuffleboard rate by 25 cents. And it was a, it was a, it was a jihad.
So according to this, and she is.
It's $30 an hour or shuffleboard. And so according to that spreadsheet, we've waived $1,000. So we intend to get $1,000 back from a shuffleboard group this year? That's not going to happen.
And it's their program.
So through the chair, I've been thinking about this a lot, because at the same time, we need to be conscious of the budget. And the one thing that I'm willing to consider is that council no longer provides dollars as in money. And we only provide facility usage and staff time. And that we no longer give out $10,000 and $20,000 to community groups. And that we have the facilities, we can offer the facilities that we have to people, but we can no longer put money on the tax base to physically hand out cash that may not benefit the majority of residents. And that's maybe something that we should consider instead of giving out actual dollars.
I did take the opportunity when we were discussing this to do Julie a text. I says, do you know the future of the county grants? What, what they will look like? Response was status quo so far, approximately $67,000. Budget meeting on Monday, she says, grants have not been a major focus so far. So then I said, we are talking about what it might look like. She says, okay, let me know if there's anything I can do. And my response to her was pray.
In my opinion, the county was really promoting their granting process more so than they ever have in the past.
It, it's been, it's been pared back a lot from what it used to be. It used to be up around 200K. But it's, it's been pared back over the years down to the 67K. And, and they do have a fairly convoluted, as far as I'm concerned, adjudication process to, to go through these grants. I, I think that something that maybe they're not as, as adhered to as they were in the past, because it was a very complicated process. And lots of times it took more time for the organizations to fill out the, the grants and go and present the grants than what the grant was worth at the end of the day. So. Again, I can't stress enough that I, I see Richard kind of smiles that this, this can be the hill you want to die on. So make sure that the decision that we make is something that we're prepared to live with. And then you have the, you have the function now. Where, where does the Fair Board fit in this? Now, we have contractual agreements with them.
Yes. So then they also, last year, applied for another $8,200 on top of the contractual agreements that are not considered grants. That's part of just the straight up, I think, recreation budget, I believe.
Yeah. So I mean, and that's, that's where, you know, start picking and choosing. And then that's where you get yourself into a bit of a, a bit of a bind.
Well, the reality is, I've had two requests for the council grant applications for 2022. We don't have them open because we don't know what you guys want to do. Do we need an idea? Do you want to set a cap? Do you want it to be status quo?
Well, I think that, again, that's, as far as I see the grant situation, it's kind of a nicety that we try to work with the community and support the community. But until we really know what the big picture is looking like, how do you know how nice you can be?
Well, yeah, see, in the past, we've set the grants kind of before. That's what I, I think Maggie would like us, maybe. You guys figure out in a number before we open them and then, then go versus we come to you saying, people want X amount of dollars. Let's fit this in our budget. So that's, I guess.
So if we're considering putting a cap on it, you know, in, in the past, last year, we had some fairly large requests. Maybe this council needs to consider that we cap it that each individual group can request no more than $5,000 for a particular project, and it doesn't exceed that. Then it's hopefully can be spread out amongst the majority of organizations that want to do things across West Sullivan. But having one group take $10,000, $11,000, $12,000, it doesn't leave as much money to benefit the other groups in the community. So we put a cap on it.
I don't think last year, we didn't even spend all our grant money. And what do we have in our grant line last year?
65.
How much do we spend of it?
Right.
Well.
Do you want to not open them until after the budget is set then?
I don't think there's any critic, it's not critical that we have to open them now.
No, we've had requests, but that's it. I just, I want to make sure. Not open them until.
And, and certainly it'll be, I, I, I'm going to be watching what the county does, of course. And, you know, what others, some other municipalities are doing across the county.
You know, Council Cameron's suggestion with regard to, you know, waiving fees for facilities, encouraging facilities, sorry, to be used is, is not a bad idea to, to switch to that as opposed to handing out hard cash. I, you know, I still think it's important for people to know what that costs. And so if we can, you know, total that over the course of the year, or maybe set a budget for that even, you know, how many thousand dollars are we going to waive in staff and building fees kind of thing? Anyway, I'm not sure I'm ready to make a decision on that.
And I don't think you guys have to. If you, I think, am I correct, Maggie? And what you and I wanted was to know, did you want to make the decision on grants before or after the budget? So after the budget and then we'll deal with it, right?
But is there any amount that council has in mind? So when I present preliminary budget to you, it's included. I just want to incorporate count 25. Okay. I just want to incorporate that amount into your budget.
And that includes waived fees and cash for start at 25 or just waived fee? Do you want separate items for separate lines or how do you want it done?
Well, I, I think the actual funds going out, so cash is the most important. So I think 25 is reasonable, going down from 65 this year.
Then there, just in case, because we still don't have to do that.
Right.
No, he's going to, he's not sure what the hell's going to happen.
Okay. So I guess just the other quick thing is just update on the process right now. The draft budget unveiling, which will be a big one, will be on December 9th. And then, yeah, like I said, we have to do a statutory meeting for the building fees. So they should, we all have those prepared to present at the December 2nd meeting to come into force on January 1st. So if that's just quickly up to date from the, what we're going to be doing with the budget, we're trying to move it sooner this year, hopefully to have it approved by the end of January at the latest. We're, we're done.
We're done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Again, we just need to move in second.
We've got a committee of adjustment at one o'clock still then. We're done till then. Sorry, just jump back on.
Yes, then to one.
All right. All right. We'll see everybody in about forty minutes then.